All right, six thirty, we'll start the meeting. All right, any need for executives tonight?
Yes, there's a couple of town manager issues to discuss. One has to do with the old manager and one has to do with the new manager.
All right.
Old and new.
Two personnel.
Not so old.
No, not yet.
Be available.
All right.
No.
So do we have a motion to go no executive?
Tag of it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any need to amend the agenda?
Uh, no, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Motion to approve has changed?
Um, not changed, right?
Not changed.
Un- 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 amended, right, right, right.
Well, you, well, as presented, you added executive session, so yes.
Sorry.
All right, wow.
All in favor say aye.
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 Um, anything on the, uh, meeting minutes of, we have February second and then the special select board meeting of February ninth? I didn't see anything.
Fine to me.
Okay, here they come, Joe, minutes.
Took you fourteen years or fifteen years to figure this out, but good job.
It is so much nicer.
Good job.
That's, you can't teach an old manager new tricks.
How many years was I trying to get you to do that?
Oh, yes, I do. It is thirteen thousand zero sixty point zero eight. And this is me taking a bow.
All right, anything on the orders?
Uh, I did have a question on the first ones that were sent to us. There's a thing, power plant, seeing as Chad's here. Uh, loader cylinder lines, almost thirteen thousand dollars. What'd you do, put new cylinders on a loader?
Um, there was, yeah, one that was leaking, repaired that, there was, um, well, quite a bit of work that was done. The brakes were an issue, so they had to take re- take the axles apart, reseal them. Um, it's most, a lot of labor was the biggest expense, but some lines that were weak and starting to leak that they replaced, just while it was down there. But yeah, it was. So, yeah, I mean, it was kind of went down through one issue and while they had it, had them go through it.
Who did that?
Uh, United Ag Enforcerie now, with Nortrax.
Oh. Hendy's, whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Whatever their name is this week.
Yeah. Yeah, we had Markowski's truck it down, do them and bring it back as well, so. Yeah, that was about fifteen more years. Should be good.
All right, and that was the only thing I had circled as well. It's the big, one of the bigger numbers.
Yeah.
It's good, now you can question me about the other stuff.
John, just to clarify too, the, um, um, the people from Dubois and King won't be on until seven thirty?
That's right.
Okay. All right, town managers report?
Yes, thank you. Just to reiterate, there is a Vermont Homeowner Assistance Program out there. Seems as though there may be several such programs in place, but this is the one we're most familiar with now. It's a program that can help homeowners, um, who are having some financial hardship due to COVID-19 through monetary help to pay mortgage payments, property taxes, water and sewer bills, et cetera. Anyone interested can learn more by visiting Vermont HAP, that's Homeowner Assistance Program, at V H F A dot org, or can call the program's hotline at eight three three two two one four two zero eight. Um, a reminder that next week, from Wednesday to Friday, we expect Daniel's Construction to be in town at the Depot Hill Cover Bridge, performing some repairs to the roof supports on the interior of the bridge that were, um, damaged in a recent truck drive-through episode. Again, this will take place Wednesday, February twenty-third through Wednesday, twenty-fifth. I'm told by the highway foreman that signage is now out, letting people who use that road frequently know that this will be taking place. Apparently, all, emergency vehicles will be able to get through during those days. And there's an expectation that in the evenings, when there's no repairs underway, that local traffic can pass through. But please look carefully when you try to navigate that bridge for those three days.
Are they replacing those pieces all, like, just replacing them all together?
They're doing as much interior repair work as they can do with prioritizing, um, the work to be done with the insurance proceeds that we received from the inspection that we had after the damage.
Yep, okay.
So it's the kind of the vert- the, um, vertical and hor- and diagonal supports to the structure. Most of this damage is superficial.
Well, that's why I didn't know if they're replacing the whole beams or, because it is just dug out, but.
Yeah, I mean, they mentioned that one that we boxed in. Uh, I don't know if that's gonna be, if they'll make it to that one or not.
Yeah, they have, they have what they think are, is the most important work to be done, kind of a priority basis. And they've given us a budget that works with what we had from the insurance carrier.
Okay. Dave had something about that.
Did we ever find out who did that?
Um, I believe the answer is no.
Okay.
I believe the answer is no. Um, so we were paid all of our perceived damage from this episode, less our one thousand dollar deductible. So I think it turned out to be something like twelve thousand dollars or so.
Didn't we, I'm sorry, but didn't we, did we not continue, are we still not gonna put a camera up? Because it keeps hap- the damage keeps happening on the bridge.
Oh, I didn't know that that was something to consider.
Don't we discussed it back when it first happened, but I don't know where, if it went anywhere.
We discussed putting in like a.
Well, a game cam, but that was the graffiti.
Yeah.
That was back.
Oh, I guess that was the graffiti, wasn't it? Well, either way, so much damage just keeps happening to the bridge.
No, it's certainly troublesome that these things happen. I guess the question is cost benefit. The cost of a camera but versus the unlikely event that you'll actually get mater- information or images that can be decisive.
But that was for the graffiti too.
Yeah, the reward was for the graffiti, yeah. Okay, yeah.
I'm pleased to say that we had a very happy, very successful event today. The event being the Town Report Dedication Ceremony, thanks to Hank and Alicia for being present in person. We had lots of people here in person and over the Zoom hookup, so we appreciate Liz Sulia Zoom hosting that get-together. And we'd like to, once again, congratulate Barb Willis and the entire recreation team, who were the recipients of dedications this year. Uh, just a reminder that the new clerk, assessor clerk position is being advertised with an application deadline of February twenty-eighth. We hope that people interested in, um, assisting the clerks, uh, the, um, the assessor's office and perhaps growing into that position as a future career would be in touch with the town manager to discuss that and how they can apply for that position. We expect to have Chad Hewitt from Sullivan Powers here next meeting, Wednesday, March second, to present his audit findings to the select board. And finally, the town offices will be closed Monday, February twenty-first, in observance of President's Day.
All right, thanks, John. Um, any select board member remarks?
Yeah. Uh, so we didn't have a regional planning commission meeting this month. I'm not sure what happened, but we didn't have one. Uh, the other thing, and I don't know if this is something, John, that's being covered with Dollar General with the changes they need to make.
Oh.
But a property owner who borders them, uh, is a little bit sick of his entire meadow being lit up by their lights. And, you know, it's just a matter of putting some shades on them so they light their parking lot and keep their light to themselves, I think is kind of what he would like.
Sure, the lights are a little much.
The lights are a little much, yeah.
Do you want, um, to give me his name, either publicly or later? I can follow up with Dollar General about it.
Uh, yeah, it's Bernie Reynolds.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, that's the meadow, so, I mean, everybody knows.
Except for, except for the old town manager.
Except for the old town manager doesn't know anything, but yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We probably oughta get rid of him, what do you think?
I'm outta here. Uh, okay, I certainly will pass on Dollar General. That was not one of the items, of course, on the punch list from V Trans. That had more to do with safety signage and that kind of thing.
Oh, okay.
I will pass it on.
All right, um, any public comment tonight?
They are a little bright.
They are a little bright.
Yeah, I went by there after dark and, yeah.
Except in the road where they should be.
Yeah, we don't need an outside light at my house, so.
No, I'm sure you don't.
Yeah.
I might comment, I noticed tonight, coming around the corner, I'll seven on the Plains Road. If there was a, a light on that south side, in that kind of a neck that sticks out there, I was telling Dave, it's too bad they couldn't somehow put a temporary, like, park a truck there with a boom up in the air with a floodlight on it, see what the effects of a light might be. But I think that's where the, the lights that's over by the cemetery.
Doesn't do any good.
That don't do much good, and the light that's on the north side, that don't really help it, but if.
In that, there needs to be another pole there, so.
Fish hook net there, if you wanna call it that. It's too bad they wouldn't some way of, setting something there temporarily just for an experiment to see what the hell it would do, but, but I got a feeling that one good big light right there would be way ahead of the two they got where they're placed.
Would you all be willing to have the, at least the perception of an eyesore of another pole? I mean, among a whole bunch of other poles, if we got better lighting as a result?
Better lights, the same issue.
Well, you could take the other two down if you, if you.
But I, I wonder, you know, part of it is, at least, and I don't drive that way much at night, but a couple of times I've been that way, again, the lights lighting up that building are so intense that it's almost, you're, you're, you're drawn to those, so then your eyes, when you turn the corner, you're in the dark.
Yeah.
Whereas if those lights stayed in the parking lot like they were supposed to, you might, that corner might look a whole lot brighter, just saying. So, you know, maybe try.
Dimming those lights first.
Giving those or at least deflecting them so they aren't in your face.
That could be.
And see if that would help that corner.
That could be phase one, and then phase two could be a pole if it's still needed.
If we have to.
Yeah, because that'd be easier fix than trying to hit.
At the same time, they do Bernie's thing, they could do that and see what, what the effect is. That would be a smart thing.
Let me talk with Dollar General and then GMP about both options.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, because it's still not good.
No.
I think, I think if you put up a decorative pole down there, not a telephone pole, it'd be farther ahead. It'd look a little, a little, a little, a little, a measure. Are there such things as decorative?
Oh, yeah.
Light poles? Yeah. Okay. Like what they got in their parking lot. You have to have rule, they have to be.
They'd be lit up down with J R's. Yeah, the way they put them in their parking lot, they don't need them.
They could be a decorated one.
Yeah.
But, yeah, yeah.
Put a Christmas tree on it, put a whale on top of it. Okey dokey.
All righty then. All right, well, I think we'll, we'll skip around the agenda, so we got, we only have two new business items. One's not until seven thirty, we're gonna have to drag this out for another forty-five minutes, so.
Cock slow.
But Chad, we'll go, um, we'll discuss the purchase of the arm mower, in case you don't want to stay here for the whole meeting.
No, I was gonna stay. Okay, um, yeah, as we discussed last year, I think our current mowers are both due for replacement. So, as I mentioned, um, instead of doing two, like we currently have, upgrade with one mower that can do everything, so we can do the roadside ditch mowing, plus it's got the boom, so we can get the farther reach as well. Howard Fairfield is who I've dealt with, um, because they, they rent, they set up, I think they have four units that they rent, um, two in New Hampshire, two in Vermont. And after, I don't know, three years or so, then they have them available for sale. So there is one currently that's available, that's ninety-nine thousand. It's got, let's see, fourteen, fourteen hundred hours on it, it's a twenty-twenty. And so that's, like I said, their rental, and for their rental machines, they, you know, they do all the service work, deliver it to the town that's renting it, take it back at the end of the week, go through it again. So, I mean, it's continuously serviced, well-maintained. Rutland Town and Mendon, I believe, bought one last year or two years ago from them, and have had good luck with it. And we also got a price, brand new, for that, would be, let's see, can't find my number, hundred and, oh, well, just, just over a hundred and forty-nine thousand for that. Um, that's with a John Deere, if we went with a New Holland, it's a little bigger tractor, a little fancier, be a hundred and fifty-six thousand. So those are the options. I, contact is one other dealer for a price, never got back to me. So, um, but like with Hick Fairfield with their new quote, or for the new unit and stuff, it's, um, trying to think, it's, uh, priced through something called Sourcewell, it's a contract pricing. That kind of takes away the bidding process. So it's like, you know, their mower, and then they go to John Deere tractor, it's the best price. So whether we got it from wherever they are now, United Ag, or whatever, which I don't think, they call the John Deere dealers, they're now United Ag anyways, so.
They're gonna be.
Yeah. But e- either way, so it's kind of, this pricing, it's gonna be, like I said, rather than going around, it's, it's pretty much a standard press, best price that we can get. Our current machines, like, that are current, our mower, still functional, um, nothing we can trade in, at least Fairfield, because they don't have a good market for that. Salesman does have, like, a contact that, customers that do purchase older machines and then prefer those and fix them up and run them and whatever, so, I mean, there is potential for resale for that. And actually, same with our smaller mower, if we chose to do that.
Any idea of what that would be, like even a ballpark?
Um, it's, I would say, possibly like ten thousand for the Ford or more. I mean, that thing. Yeah, that's, that's done well to keep it running, um, as well as we have. Um, I think, you know, the smaller one, I, I don't know, I mean, hard to say. I would say close to that, if not a little more, um, because, I mean, that, smaller tractors are.
Better than.
Good, yeah, I mean, that's actually, really don't want to get rid of it, just because it's such a good tractor, but, you know, without having that small mower, it's, we don't need it.
So, you're talking a hundred grand to buy this, what would it cost us? They have these rental machines, to rent a machine for, how, how long would we have to rent it for? I mean, if you guys just went out and mowed the roadsides with one?
That's about, I think it's, the rental is around three thousand.
A week?
For a week.
Yeah.
Which, and there's, I don't, I believe there's no limit in hours, they drop it off Monday, pick it up Friday.
Yeah.
I don't, we could do, we could get around town, like doing the arm mowing part with it, with the reach, within that time, even if we split, you know, one guy ran it during the day, someone came in in the afternoon, especially, you know. That would certainly be possible. I don't know how quick to do the roadside, the grassy area, you know, like that small mower, we can get around. I mean, that takes, I guess I never looked up, see how many days we, we run that to do the whole town, to get like two passes back with that.
Mm-hmm.
Where this, this one's gonna be a little bit slower, but it's a joystick control, so it's gonna be, like our current arm mower, it's a pain because it's got the four, four levels, levers to set it and stuff, so.
I get that, yeah.
Time-wise, but, um, yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I guess that's the other option, is we upgrade the small one, but even to upgrade the smaller, well, we've had that discussion there, I think last year, it's, the current mower that we have, they don't make, they make a heavier one now, so our tractor's too small for that. So we'd have to look for a, they're just, you know, I'm sure there's ones that they make small enough for that, just take time to look for one, to have one so we could do the grass roadside worker.
That's what I'm thinking, I mean, it, at a hundred thousand dollars for this machine, uh, and if, you know, you're spending, even if it takes you two weeks, you know, you use the arm mower, you know, a week in June and a week in August or September, whatever, you know, that's six grand a year. You haven't got any maintenance costs, you haven't got anything. If it breaks, it's theirs.
Yeah.
There's a lot of advantages to that, and then you've still got your little mower to run around and do, you know, the easy stuff with.
Right, right.
In your experience, is this machi- would this machine be available when we need it? I guess that's a question.
Uh.
For rental?
Well, it would be if we say we want it, Aug- yeah, third week of August. Then we sign up for it and then.
Plenty of advance notice, yeah.
So, yeah, so it's kind of, so, yeah, so that week, once it's there, then whatever we're doing.
You gotta stop and do that.
We got a guy on a mower.
Unless there's a type four or something in which you can't really.
We have to cancel, yeah, I mean, that's, that's the downside to it. But.
Joe had something.
I got a couple of thoughts about this. I'm probably to blame for the arm mower you got, because when that came into picture, I saw it, it was sitting up north and I, if you're, I don't, if you remember or not, but.
Yeah.
I kind of encouraged that, I'm not sure if I'm proud of myself or not. That's another subject.
I have an opinion on that as well, but I.
I think, like Dave says, would it be a good idea, maybe for, either talk to somebody that rents one, or else, maybe for a year or two, rent one? Another thing, that machine only gets used, doesn't get a month's running in a whole year, I don't believe.
Not, not for the arm part of that.
Probably a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
It's too damn bad that two or three towns can't own one together. Now, I know this makes problems, but it could be you worked out. The town of Rutland and, and, uh, and Mendon have a chipper together. I know this for a fact, because I've talked with somebody.
They got that mower too.
They bought a used chipper, somebody in Mendon was kind of, kind of handy as a mechanic, they took it up there, and I think the chipper stays in Mendon, but they rebuilt it, the two towns did it together, and they share that chipper, and, and that keeps their costs at a minimum.
Mm-hmm.
But it seems to me that it's a damn shame that two or three towns around here couldn't get together on something like this. It might be worth just a phone call to find out. Maybe it's, maybe I'm out of my tree in suggesting that, but I think it ought to be thought about. Because it's something you don't, you don't, you don't need to bucket, you don't use it for anything but mowing.
Right.
Your little mower is, is really a hell of a good little mower to go around and, and mow the edges of the road. Goes right along, good. Get rid of that while parsing it before it goes to seed.
Yeah.
That's a big problem, a lot of towns are letting it go and it, it goes to seed.
State of Vermont, it's good at that.
I see this because I'm traveling around, I go down to Wells all summer long and down through there, it's a disgrace the way they let that stuff get to seed. Pittsburgh, you guys have mowed what, twice usually?
Um, at least twice.
And I think twice keeps up with them damn weeds.
Yeah.
You can't reach all the way down over the banks, I realize that, but you can get a lot of it.
Yeah.
But it seems too bad to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have a machine set in a damn shed for ninety-nine percent of the time, if there's another way that could be worked out so we get our work done. But perhaps renting it on a trial basis for a year or two? Maybe, maybe there's some towns that, I, I don't, I haven't researched it, but somewhere you could talk to that does rent them. It's a shame that maybe a couple of towns now, if two or three towns own one, they picked out one guy to run the damn thing. Because you don't want to put everybody on something like that.
No.
That's a big mistake. But you find, pick a guy that's good with it, let him go, he's part of that machine. And swap hours and times and stuff with different towns, you could keep your costs, I think, a lot cheaper. I think we should explore the possibilities and then, yes, we need one, and we should have one, there's no reason why we can't have one. But what is the pattern we follow, I think it ought to be looked at a little more.
Was there some discussion in the past also about just contracting this work out?
That's another way it was, yeah.
All the mowing or just the arm mowing? Because we've done the arm mowing contract before we bought, purchased ours, and that's, yeah, I mean, that's.
What was your experience with the arm mowing contract?
Um.
Happily successful?
It was okay, but, I mean, there's only a limited amount that he got to, which, that was before we started doing it, now since we've been mowing, there's really, you know, we could do, kind of do half the town.
One year and a half.
One year, half the next, I mean, stuff stay, it's mowed down pretty good now, so it's, so, yeah, no, I, I'm not opposed to renting it, trying it. Again, would have to still upgrade our small one, the mower at least, um, just because that one's, well, hopefully we get another year out of it. But, I mean, once it goes, they don't make them anymore and it's, but I, yeah, and I hate to get rid of the smaller one, because, you know, like Joe said, we get around, I mean, we go around two, sometimes three times a year, and it keeps it, keeps the intersections down, keeps the weeds down, you know, and that one works good, it's.
Well, and you got a, you've got a tractor on it that if it breaks, you can fix it.
Well, that's it, yeah, and that, well, that's, yeah, that's a good.
They may even have a, a new version of a smaller mower that's better than the one you got, if you were to replace it, possibly.
Yeah, no, they.
I don't know, but.
Yeah, I mean, there's definitely other options and.
Any idea what the cost would be to upgrade the smaller mower to the way that you might like it?
Um, trying to think, but the, that one that we have is ten, I would say maybe fifteen thousand ballpark.
And then six thousand a year to rent the arm mower?
Oh, definitely.
Way to go for it now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, at least for a few years, try running the mower, see how it works. You may find it doesn't work, but to me.
That's right.
You know, a hundred grand versus three grand a year, it'd take a lot of years to pay that hundred grand.
Yeah.
Give you time enough to search out other towns if they're interested in it.
Well, yeah, you get, you know, Brandon and Proctor, the three of us want to own one or whatever.
Yeah. They're all intersecting each other, it's Brandon too, as far as I go.
Proctor could use it.
Here old.
Your old machine. Your old machine, you might, comes time you want to get rid of it, you might just put it up for bid and see what happens.
Yeah.
You can either sell it or keep it or.
Junk it.
Junk it.
Yeah, yeah, and actually, I mean, like I said, the Ford arm mower, we can.
That wasn't.
Find a home for that, and even that current small mower, once we get a replacement for that, I mean, I, again, I think we can get a couple thousand for that. I mean, I, again, I think we can get a couple thousand for that from somebody maintaining their own property and stuff.
So does the board want to hear more from Chad about the cost to replace the smaller mower or upgrade the smaller mower? Or do you not want to commit any money because we might work with other towns on a joint ownership?
I would suggest you just do a little bit of research and come, see what you can find out about prices and whether anybody's willing to work with us. Maybe we're, we're on our own. I, I don't know what your thoughts are about dealing with sharing one or maybe you don't want to, or something, I mean, you're.
I don't mind sharing the arm mower, I guess the smaller mower, I'd prefer we had our own.
I agree. Because keep your own.
Then we can.
Keep your own for a little one.
Intersection stuff, yeah.
Do it when we have time and.
You've got spots that, you know, you're going to need to do.
Weatherwise, other projects pop up, it's kind of.
Well, I think, what I would suggest, John, is for, that we look at for at least the next year or this coming year, um.
Gives you time to do it, yeah.
Is, you know, look at renting a machine for a week to do your arm mowing, see if you can get half the town done, you know, see how it works. If you're able to get your half the town done you want to get done, uh, we can continue with that practice. Uh, either way, probably right now, getting rid of the Ford with the arm mower would be a good thing to do.
Yeah.
Because there's a shortage of that kind of equipment, so it's the time, you're going to get more out of it now than you are if things ever straighten out.
Hmm.
And look into seeing what you can do with the same John Deere tractor, but upgrading that back mower.
Yeah.
See if you can find a company that makes one that will work on there.
Yep.
Meanwhile, we can send out an email to all the town managers in the region, anybody interested in possibly considering a joint purchase of.
Hold on, more arm mower, yeah?
And actually, when we rent it, we can actually give us a chance to try, like doing the roadside as well to see if it's even, I mean.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I know, like I said, Rutland Town, Mendon, they use theirs, they've had success, but we might not like it, I guess.
Well, yeah, so it's better to, to at least rent one for a year and try it than it is to spend a hundred grand for one to find out they can't do what you want.
Yeah.
You feel bad, because we're fairly receptive right now. We might not be afterwards. And you won't need another hundred thousand dollar truck.
Over in New York State, I spent a lot of time over there with a truck, so I've talked with people, but the county owns some of that equipment, and the towns rent it from them, from the county. And I, I presume the state's behind it, but, uh, the towns have access to it, and it's probably a hell of a good rate. I've never heard of Vermont ever doing that, but maybe somebody ought to suggest it to one of our legislators.
If we don't do much county, county, I mean, a lot of the country, county is, county is a big deal, but it really isn't in this state, never has been.
The Regional Planning Commission has sometimes tried to, uh, broker relationships among towns to do a joint purchase of something like a hydro seeder.
Yeah.
This kind of thing, that kind of thing, but, um, yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt for us to just see who's even in the market and might be interested in collaborating.
Could be nobody is, too.
Well, yeah, or maybe there's, you know.
Well, no, you'd ask.
Yeah, I think it's worth asking.
Check around, we'll only come back to us, and we'll, we'll do something for you.
Not much mowing to do this time of year anyway.
No, we got time, we got time.
Why don't you put enough salt on the roadside, you won't have to mow anyways. Especially if you put it on and plow it off every time.
Not every time. I'll schedule the rental then, I'll pick a week and get that scheduled.
I'd be in favor of that.
Because they generally fill up.
This year, at least, this year, rent, see how it works out.
Yeah?
Yeah.
We love.
So, and I can get prices for my small one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Information is always good.
Yeah, you gotta keep that one going.
Yeah, like I said, that, that one's due, I mean, it's, it's time, so.
Well, mowing that kind of stuff is a rough life.
Yeah.
And as they say, gather information on who might be interested in buying the used.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we don't need a motion on that, right? It's just a consensus?
No, just consensus. Input?
Yeah, I mean, and I guess I would say as soon as you can get an arm mower locked in for a week.
For when you think you need it.
I mean, figure out a way to sell that other one.
Yeah, like I said.
Get out from under it.
Salesman I dealt with, he's got a few customers that, um, that he, you know, he'll let know. He actually looked at it there last week, two weeks ago, took some pictures, so.
Oh, good.
You know, let him know, gotta reserve it through him anyways and, uh, yeah, good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, uh, update on, uh, recruitment of new town manager?
Yeah, not much to report. Um, Rick McGuire's happy to, um, kind of give some updates, uh, maybe tomorrow as to where things stand on that front, and there's some to discuss in executive session.
Okay, all right. And then, uh, anything new on a town meeting preparations?
Yes, yes, um, as everyone may know, because we've announced it a couple of times, um, there'll be a information, a select board informational hearing on Monday, February twenty-eighth at six thirty. That kind of takes the place of our traditional town meeting, just as it did last year. It's a select board meeting, no moderator, but at that time, we will lay out our budget proposals and let everyone know a little bit more about, um, any of the questions they have about the proposed budgets that will appear in the town reports that people are getting on their doorstep this week. Um, there will be then voting, um, at the firehouse on Tuesday between seven AM and seven PM. That's Tuesday, March first. Of course, people have the right to, uh, vote by mail in advance of that or to drop off their ballots at the clerk's office in advance of that, or again, to bring them to the polling place on that Tuesday. On that following night, Wednesday, um, March second, there'll be a select board meeting as normal, which is normally devoted to organizational matters and reappointments of officers, and of course, we'll have the audit report presented, as I mentioned earlier. Um, I did include in your packet a draft letter to the editor. We had, the select board had done one last year, kind of explaining the new system during this pandemic as an alternative to town meeting, this, uh, public information hearing. If there's any comments or suggested revisions to that letter, it'd be a good time for me to hear it. I can make any changes and then we can submit it to the two local papers. But there will be an agenda for that informational hearing posted online and around town in these next few days.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, one thing along with the voting, I think, needs to be brought up is for those who haven't opened their ballots yet, there is no school ballot in there.
All right.
If you want a school ballot, you need to either contact the town office and get one mailed to you, come here, fill one out, uh, or you have to go vote in person.
That day.
Which I disagree with, because if the town chose
They should have done the same thing.
not to vote in person, that ballot should have been in with ours, but supposedly there was some reason why it couldn't be. Uh, as of yesterday, when I came in to vote, only twenty-nine people in Pittsburgh had asked for a ballot. So, uh, you know, maybe everybody's planning to go vote, but, uh, it doesn't look like it would be a very massive turnout unless people are planning on going and voting. So, just something for everybody to be aware of, your school ballot is not in there.
It should have been, shouldn't it?
Well, from my perspective, it should have been, but according to Gene Collins, it couldn't be.
As I understood it, because not every school, uh, not every town in the district voted to allow mail-in ballots, they had to take a, a consistent approach, and the consistent approach was to give them to nobody.
No.
That's, that's Helen's explanation to me.
That doesn't make sense.
It doesn't make sense, no, it doesn't.
It's kind of ridiculous.
Educator?
Yeah, okay.
Says it all.
Wow, you know, you got to wonder.
No, it looks like a duck, quite like a duck, probably a duck.
Duck, yeah, yeah.
Hard to argue with that.
It is, it is, it is. So, anyway, so, wanted to make people aware.
And then, John, on the twenty-eighth, are we meeting here? Because last year, we were at Lothrup.
No, this year, we are going to be back at Lothrup. I just got.
We are, okay. That's, we would have shown up in the wrong.
I want to let you know, Deb Alexander, um, has agreed to be our Zoom host again.
Okay.
As Kelly pointed out correctly, she was going to be our Zoom host here, that, um, we still have this concern about whether we have a large crowd, whether we can handle all of the video at once with our limited bandwidth at this facility. The school has much better internet, and so that's the reason that we will have our
Okay.
session from there. But again, it's all remote, except for the people on this group who are participating, so.
Okay.
That's good to know, because I would have been here.
I would have come here too.
Yeah, we'd probably all been here.
This just changed this afternoon.
Oh, okay.
Monday.
That's Monday, that's Monday the twenty-eighth, and let's hope Dave, Sulia, and Stefan Goulet are in a better parking spot than they were last year.
You're, yeah, I remember that.
The time on that.
Six thirty.
How long the cruiser?
Oh, yeah.
Come for six-ten, we'll have a special twenty-minute session.
Tell them to have a conversation.
And I'll follow up.
Tree's gone now.
Feet down, okay, good.
And, and by the way, um, we will be meeting that night at about six-ten, as we always do for a little last-minute chat. And then, um, um, again, Deb Alexander will be able to handle all the Zooming duties that night.
We just talked about it last night, Alicia, so it's not, it hasn't been.
I know, well, it just occurred to me when we talked about it, okay. I know, because this, right, this system will only handle about twenty people on Zoom for.
We don't know that.
Potentially for my craft.
We don't know, but we don't want to find out.
Right, okay.
Well, this was not running at that.
No.
No.
I think it was, but we were worried about the bandwidth.
Okay.
So, by the way, um, I'll be in touch with Joe and, um, Alicia early next week to come in and, uh, do a little prep session for your remarks.
All right, great.
For that presentation.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, and then I guess lastly, until our seven-thirty hearing, um, potential uses of ARPA funds?
Uh, yes, at the last meeting, we just put our toe in the water for the first time with kind of a presentation of an incomplete list, but something to spur discussion and the thought on the part of the select board about how the town might best invest its eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars in ARPA funds over these next few years. Um, there were a couple of questions that were asked at the last meeting, and we have answers from our friends at VLCT who have dedicated an employee who does nothing but ARPA. And so the first question was, that we raised was, may the town transfer ARPA funds to a nonprofit organization located within town whose purpose, at least in part, is to provide desirable public space and programming to town residents? Yes, without any explanation. So, that seems to be a pretty clear yes, if the board wishes to do so. No present, no proposals pending right now. Um, the more complicated answer, may the town use ARPA funds to endow, say, providing the first injection of seed money into a revolving loan fund to be administered by the town in order to foster economic development within the town? We have quite a lengthy answer, I'll go through it if you'd like. The answer is yes, but it would be better to seed with, to seed an RLF revolving loan fund with general funds if possible. We are waiting on additional guidance and/or opinions to be issued from Treasury, national professional organizations, or even Vermont accounting firms that do municipal audits. There are still many unknowns about how ARPA funds will flow through municipalities as general ledgers. Additionally, VLCT has hired a government finance specialist who started this week. She'll be working with me and towns directly to help them work through their finance questions as they relate to the use of ARPA funds. In addition, to assist with general member inquiries and the topic of finance, she'll also be available on a fee basis to those towns that have finance projects that need deeper assistance.
So is this more, um, because I am really interested in us getting a revolving loan fund. Is this because of like the accounting issue that if somebody was to take out a loan, like the way it's paid back? Like instead of it coming from like a lump, like a lot, like having the ARPA funds in a separate account, like I just, I guess I don't.
I don't, I don't know the rationale. I just know that she's kind of suggesting, it seems like it's possibly doable, but let's wait a little bit of time for more guidance from the federal government a, as people, um, think these things through.
Okay.
Hell, we'll use that money to buy a new road mower.
Five, five or six road mowers.
Yeah.
Take a new truck instead, get the mower with our own funds.
Now, I should point out that Eric Hall from the Regional Planning Commission also has ARPA-related duties, and I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that or not. I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, that's fine. I, I showed up at the right time. Um, you know, I think the short presentation that I did at the, um, TAC meeting a week or two ago, um, really highlighted the big change that came out with Treasury's final rule, that being an option to, um, possibly elect a standard allowance for revenue loss. So, this is where waiting for additional guidance from VLCT, um, you know, national professionals, Vermont accounting firms is important right now. I think that's kind of the stage we're at, is getting some additional guidance about how that could impact, well, first of all, uses, because the standard, the revenue loss category enables municipalities to use the funds for the provision of government services, which, um, you know, really broadens the, the, the uses, available uses. Um, but then the, how that is managed through the town's finances and, and bookkeeping essentially, is really the big question right now. So, you know, it's great that VLCT has hired this government finance professional, um, you know, I think she's really getting ramped up, and, and once, once there's, a little more time has gone by and, and there's been some, you know, more collaboration and deciphering, I think there'll be some clear answers on, you know, how best to proceed with, with some of these new options.
Okay, all right, great. So, is there anything else you want to kind of discuss about potential uses of ARPA funds, or we want to just, just hang in there and wait for more?
I'd like to point out, we spent over seventy thousand dollars of money to study the east-west animal corridor. And it turned out that we didn't want anything to do with it when it was all said and done. And there was a stack of papers probably that high for that seventy-odd thousand dollars. I hope that we can spend this money and get a little something besides a stack of papers.
Can I ask what you meant by we? You don't mean the town of Pittsburgh.
Well, that's my fear.
Is it the state of Vermont that spent that money, or the town it's?
That money, that money was, I believe that money was, was federal money that came through the state. But it was seventy-odd thousand dollars, and I, I sat here and approved of it. I'm ashamed of myself, to tell you the truth right now. But there was, all that money was spent on an east-west animal, I don't know if you've ever heard of such a thing.
Oh, no, he has, because they're still doing it, okay.
The friends of my house.
And as a landowner, there's another landowner. Nobody really thought it was a great thing when it was all said and done. So where'd that seventy-odd thousand dollars go? In smoke. Let's spend this kind of money that we're talking about and get something back for it. Something that the people really need, something that'll do somebody some good besides somebody building up a stack of papers.
Yeah, I know, for sure. That's why I guess it does make sense for us to really.
Thanks for listening.
Take the time.
Take the time and wait till we know what we can do.
Well, as the broadband seems like such a great idea, but then when we heard from Sean Good, how much it was going to cost just for those two families? And I heard from someone else that their five families, I forget what road they're on, a consol, um, consolidated, what is that, um, whatever. It would be seventy thousand dollars for them to get broadband split between just five families, like, and there's, and we don't have enough in ARPA funds to even like help make that doable.
But I think what the CUD is up to is not dealing with one neighborhood here and one group there, but rather a regional approach to bring fiber everywhere, and there are economies of scale. The larger the project, maybe, maybe the more efficient the investment. And I think that the CUDs are all gearing up to make presentations to select boards, knowing that they've got this ARPA money. And maybe they're preparing to say, here's what we think each town should contribute toward supporting the project. But I think that's probably in these next few months. But I think that's probably in these next few months.
Okay.
I see it on their agenda.
Oh, good, okay, because yeah, it'd be good to see.
Preparing talking points for select boards, that kind of thing.
All right.
So it's coming. They can smell the money.
Everybody can smell the money.
Well, that's, yeah.
If I could add, you know, I think you brought up a few good points. You know, first, keeping in mind the true intention of the funds and that's, you know, an economic recovery that has the greatest reach in the community. So, you know, having something that you, you know, have a substantive result is important. And then also, with all the money out there, you know, broadband, there's, there's a lot of money to be leveraged. So, you know, being able to utilize everything that is available to you in the most efficient way, I think, is, or most effective way, is important here too. So there is still time, but, you know, as we know, it seems like all of a sudden it can be, you know, a year.
Yeah.
And then that adds up quickly. So, you know, funds need to be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So just being deliberate and moving along, but also, you know, making sure that all the answers are out there. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Thanks.
Time for a break if you'd like it?
Yeah, we have nothing until seven forty-five. Or seven thirty, rather, seven thirty.
Recording stopped.
Seven minute break. All right, yeah, seven thirty, so we'll formally call the hearing to order.
We do have, of course, in tonight's packet of materials, the Pittsburgh Village Sidewalk Scoping Study slideshow, which I believe Dayton will walk us through when it comes time for him to speak. But I think you wanted to say a few words there, Eric?
Sure thing.
From the Regional Planning Commission, who's working with the town to develop these plans.
Yeah. Great, happy to be here. So this is the Alternatives Presentation Meeting for the Pittsburgh Sidewalk Scoping Study. I'm Eric. I'm from the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and acting as the Municipal Project Manager for the Town of Pittsburgh on this study. So this study is funded by a D-Trans Transportation Alternatives Grant. And that Transportation Alternatives Program provides funds for pedestrian and bicycle facilities to enhance safety, mobility, and accessibility in the community. The study is guided by the Municipal Assistance Guidebook and D-Trans Municipal Assistance Project Supervisor Peter Pochop, which I believe Pete is on with us tonight. Hi, Pete. So these projects follow the Agency of Transportation Municipal Assistance Process, which began with the selection of the engineering consultant, DuBois and King. And so the study's been ongoing since, let's see, spring of 2021. And so, yeah, we've reached the Alternatives Presentation Meeting, which kind of serves as an update for the community regarding the current stage of the scoping study. It allows for input. And, you know, these alternatives have been investigated and will be presented by DuBois and King. So with that, I'll hand it over to Dayton. Oh, can't hear you yet.
He's muted.
How's that for a false start? What I said was, no, thank you very much for that, that good intro, intro, Eric. And yeah, my name is Dayton France. I work as a senior planner with DuBois and King. And I think what we're really here to walk through for, for the community is a little bit of a overview of the process thus far and sort of how we've gotten to this point on the study, as well as the various design concepts that we're coming up with. And certainly, the whole process of a scoping study is very much to, to look closely at, you know, in Pittsburgh's town plan, there's an idea for, let's build out our pedestrian network, let's have safe walking routes. But then when it comes down to the nuts and bolts of which streets do we look at, how can those routes be developed? That's what scoping study really, we try to do and look closely at it, provide the town the information they need to decide, A, is it a good idea at all, B, where should those sidewalks go, and C, how much is that going to cost and what kind of permits might we need? And so that's kind of the overview. And if I can, I'll share my screen and sort of walk through a little bit of this presentation. And as I go, if anyone in the room there, you know, it's a hybrid format, so, you know, if anyone's on the web and wants to put a chat in the box, I'm happy to answer questions as I go. Feel free to chime in and just ask me to pause on anything. I'll try to find a few points to pause in this presentation. But hopefully people are seeing a familiar view on Arch Street. Maybe a little more snow on it now. People seeing that?
Yep.
Okay, great. So, just to reiterate, what is that scoping study? That, my little preamble there is that the scoping study is in this, in this graphic, we try to create a sort of sense of the quasi-linear process of investing in public infrastructure, right? And that all goes from the town plan process, and we're going to have Town Meeting Day coming up here soon, where everyone really gets to sort of set priorities and have a voice in the budget, how these things get decided. And these town plans set these broad, big goals for the entire town. And then, as you pick pieces out of that, you know, D-Trans has a really important cost of funding that support towns in looking deeper into it at scoping study level. But the real intent of these scoping studies is to save a town the money it would cost to move into construction design and actual permitting for any of these projects if we find out that certain ideas aren't what we want to move forward with, aren't in the, in the community's priorities. And then, you know, ideally, good scoping studies have a result that they say, you know what? These elements are what the community wants. We have feedback from the community. We have the understanding of what it's going to take and how much it's going to cost and where we want to put these things. Then you move in towards construction documentation, permitting, and eventually building. So that's where we sit. And one of the things I wanted to open up tonight's meeting with, I'm going to get into where we're looking at sidewalks and what they're doing, but I wanted to bring people up to speed on, kind of, you know, kind of, this slide, the story so far. When we kicked this off and the town was looking at a series of roads, I'll show on a coming slide, and said, let's look at Arch Street, Pleasant Street, Plain Street, Pinewood, Tarunzo, and Mechanic. Let's see what we can do for sidewalks in these corridors. And so we put out a survey before we started doing any design, asking the community, you know, what do you want? And we got a hundred and forty-eight responses, you know, which is actually really great for, you know, any small community. And, you know, vast majority are the neighbors in Pittsburgh. And we also got some really good responses from people on the affected streets. We really wanted to hear from people who, if there was a new sidewalk project, it would affect them most directly. And so that sort of shows who gave us feedback. And it was a really important survey right at the beginning of this process because we did this for every road that was being considered. We did this for Plains and we did this for Arch Street. And on those two in particular, there was general support and some opposition that was about the same in the community as it was on the street. But I don't have those two on the slide here because Pinewood Road and Tarunzo Road, there was, there was a big difference there between, in the community rankings, and I apologize, this text is really small. Basically, as you're looking at these things left to right, on the right side is absolutely for it. We'd love to see a new sidewalk project. It'd be great to have a safer walking route. On the left side is, get off of my lawn. That is not needed. I don't need to see those changes. It's going to be a big headache. It's a waste of money, right? And then everything else is somewhere more in the middle. And when you look at these responses on Tarunzo and Pinewood, in the community, it looks pretty split. You say, well, some people are for it, some people are against it. But then we sorted by the answers that were specific to each street. And the voice was pretty clear, like people on Tarunzo Road, people on Pinewood Road, didn't want to see this project come through. And that's, again, the really important part of a scoping study, is that, yes, these were good ideas from some planning preliminary effort, but when you really ask the people who live there, some folks don't want to see a sidewalk project on the street. So this, the town and this team adjusted based on those survey results really early on. So on the left here, you can see Pinewood, Plains, Tarunzo is not labeled, but it's the link there, Mechanics, and Arch Street in green as the initially highlighted roads that we started the project looking at. But after that public feedback, we said, okay, great, let's right-size it. And so we took out Pinewood and Tarunzo. And there was another shift as we looked into Mechanic Street, which I'm not mentioning because there wasn't a lot of public feedback that I can base this in. But as we looked at all the conflicts and all the challenges in Mechanic Street, recognizing that there is a partial sidewalk and a school one street over, it made a lot of sense really beyond to recognize those constraints, those physical constraints and property constraints as saying, Mechanic's not the right street to look at a future project on. Pleasant is. So those are the changes that we made. And so these three streets, Plains Road, Pleasant Street, and Arch Street, is what I'm here to talk about tonight. Any questions on that so far before I go into the design concepts?
I have a question, just a general question. In general, are people who live along a stretch of road that is being considered for a sidewalk, would you normally expect them to be supportive or opposed? Does that kind of go with the territory that the people who abut the path of a sidewalk are cautious and skeptical?
That's a difficult question to answer, John. Really, it varies so much based on every community we've seen. I mean, I've seen communities, I've seen entire communities say, we don't want sidewalks, that's not what we are, it doesn't belong here. Right? As, as every community. And then I've seen communities, you know, you know, I've seen, I've seen different, so I'll, I'll name them just because I can like kind of think of these stories, is that, you know, in the last years, we've done a project in Guilford, Vermont, which they, they want good connections, they want safer places to walk, they want some recreation. But they're just, they're saying sidewalks aren't us, that's an urban thing. We don't want to be urban. We don't want sidewalks we want. Maybe they should look at trails, right? And that's their approach. And then you do a project over, we did a project a year or two back in Norwich on a stretch of road outside of their village center. And that whole community rallied together to have big groups of people supporting the sidewalk project at every meeting. And it was, you know, we had ninety people in the virtual rooms coming to say sidewalk, 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 chanting, I live here, bring me a sidewalk. So a lot of, that's a lot of storytelling, but there's, there's quite a range. So that's why we always like to get a poll in. So anyhow, I'll, I'll jump into a few of these. And again, if there's questions, feel free to speak up and ask things. So we'll, we'll start with Pleasant Street and look through here. So here's, here's where the sidewalk ends. If I had a better memory, I'd quote the Shell Service Team poll I read in my kids all the time. But the idea really here is, is simple, to try to carry this sidewalk alignment all the way there to that stop sign. And one of the reasons that we're looking at that connection in particular, and I think one of the emphasis is for this study that maybe my colleague Pete Pochop can speak more to, is the planned improvements along Route Seven. And what you see in this aerial on the right-hand side of the screen in light blue is, you know, some lines taken from D-Trans planning documents showing where those new sidewalks are going to come. And so if we could make a clear, contiguous connection, you're building, you know, not the one southern route that's a safe walking route to Lothrup Elementary, but one for the north and the south. So a straightforward project, relatively short distance. The, the key thing about this, and I think our graphics don't fully, fully explain it because we got surveys after we developed these graphics, is that the, the actual sidewalk construction would need a foot or two of right-of-way easement from these property owners. And that's going to be the most challenging aspect of this project. Otherwise, putting in this sidewalk, you would not need to narrow the road much at all. You'd have a simple sidewalk adjacent to the roadway, very similar to how it is in the south. But due to the alignment of the property lines and where the roadway sits, this, this will need a couple of feet of easement from these property owners. And that's going to be noted in our report. That's, that's the Pleasant Street project. And there's very little utility movement or other complications there. It would easily be, outside of the complications involved in getting easements, it would be the least expensive of any of these projects. And so then we move on to Arch Street. And up here, and Tom, and all of these images, they'll both be available for review after this meeting. We also are including versions of these in all, all of our report materials that are downloadable from the town website. I'll include those resources as well for people. But looking at the Arch Street connection, there's a lot of complications on Arch Street, but nothing that can't be surmounted. You're looking at having to remove trees and add a retaining wall along some slope areas on the southern side or on the northern side where we're proposing this alignment. You're looking at a couple of places where existing drainage improvements need to be extended. We'll have to extend a culvert that already exists under the road to accommodate a sidewalk over it and maintain drainage patterns. You're looking at having to relocate a hydrant a little bit further along and extend a second culvert. There'll have to be retaining walls. But really, getting, getting up to the, sort of, the far end, approaching Route Seven of Arch Street, there's private property conflicts that really drive a lot of us saying the north side is the right side for this roadway to be on. And the reason we say that, there's, for every one of these conflicts that we've labeled on this alignment, there's more on the south. There's higher slopes that require larger and more expensive retaining walls. There's the need for culvert extension is greater. There's a couple of extra drainages on that side. And then really importantly too, in picture, letter B here, you can see that, you know, despite what might be an assumed right-of-way of three rod width from the center line, there's a lot of these, of these homes whose, you know, their varied property lines and their building lines are grandfathered in close enough to the sidewalk with fences and vegetation that makes installation there difficult. Whereas on the north side, there's just about enough room to put it in, in board of a, of a property owner's fence. And so we created these sections to try to show what that might look like. Letter A, the ravine here, just, just east of Pleasant Street. You'd look at a five-foot sidewalk with a short retaining wall and no narrowing to the existing twenty-two-foot road. And then when you're moving further east to the roadway, maybe a slight narrowing of the road to about twenty-one feet to fit a five-foot sidewalk in within the existing fence line that lies there today. So in, again, a full survey and getting exact property boundaries that understand how these things lie, but using fences and approximate GIS boundaries that were available to us in scoping study, it looks like this could go through without easements in the public right-of-way and just be a good tight fit here. Another thing worth noting in this design that we propose is, I think we had some initial designs showing the sidewalk going all the way up to this triangle past the church here. But we, we stopped short of that, recognizing that, number one, the, the D-Trans projects terminate sort of at the front door to this church. There's a pedestrian crossing at this location. And really building the sidewalk out to this point didn't seem to benefit anyone other than whoever's making money off the concrete. Because you access the church, you access, you know, a straight walk in front of the church to more sidewalk and a pedestrian crossing. And should there be a demand for further pedestrian connections, you know, southeast of this, that could be approached to another project. But we thought that was a, kind of a wise savings on the project there. So that's Arch Street. I know I just ran through a lot there. Any questions about anything I ran through on Arch Street? Okay. So then, oop, zoomed in there, Plains Road. And Plains Road's relatively, as far as we see, projects in New England, right-of-ways and putting in sidewalks, a really great space for it. There is relatively open space on either side of the roadway. There's good sightlines. There are some constraints that we'll talk about here, but nothing crazy significant. So there will be some areas of retaining wall, really kind of where Tarunzo Road plugs into, to, to Plains is one of the main areas that will need some more expensive retaining walls in this alignment. And in Plains, there's, there's really, there's a, oh, you'll see in the next slides here, but there's two alignments that we're considering for this one. And both have pros and cons. So this first one is the southern alignment. And one of the big pros here is that there's a sidewalk built in front of the New Dollar General. And this, and this one would plug right into that and carry on in front of the town offices and link you up with, you know, the end of the alignment would bring you right up to entries up to the town forests. And so with this alignment, there's no road crossings, the sidewalk stays on one side of the road. It's very standard and predictable. But what's most peculiar about this alignment and some of the more interesting issues we've run into are photos A and B here. Letter A is one of my favorite things. It's somebody who actually sort of often designs sidewalks for a living. There's an old marble sidewalk right there. And you don't, you don't make them like that anymore. So that is something that can't really just build into that and build over it with the types of grants that are available to us. I mean, as, that's basically archaeological history there, cultural history. And so our project would really need to either avoid that, and I think there's ways to integrate it, but the integration drives up the cost a whole lot. And then right next to it, the letter B here, is, this picture doesn't do it justice, but you can sort of assume by the size of this trunk, that this is a very mature tree. I think you can leave the town offices, go look left, and you'll see it. Really big, beautiful, mature tree tree that we don't want to have to damage. It's, you know, probably one of the best parts of looking out that property owner's window, not to mention driving down the street. So these two constraint areas drive a proposal for the south side that creates something that's a little bit different than just a straight line. And this, you can, sharp-eyed viewers might see the bumps in this alignment, but it's hard to make out in this graphic. So what I'll do is I'll show you this in section view. These bump outs are what would change. These bump outs are what would change most of the roadway with the sidewalk on it would look just like this. So you have twenty-two-foot wide road, very much like you have today, eleven-foot lanes on either side, a curve, a six-inch curve, five-feet concrete sidewalk or asphalt sidewalk, and that's effectively the project. And this section we drew would require a very small retaining wall. But where those constraints exist, so basically at the marble sidewalk and at the street tree for about fifty feet, the sidewalk would jump into the road a couple of feet, and I, not jump, I mean, this would be a gradual angling in, and it would narrow the roadway down to eighteen feet. There's roads in New England that I would never do this on. I live on a very steep hill in Montpelier, and with steep hills, with no sightlines, tops of hills, bottoms of hills, you wouldn't want to do this because of the sight distances. But with the long open that you have on Plains Road, and the fact that eighteen feet, if you're driving two Subarus past each other, a Subaru and a big truck, or even two Ford F-350s past each other, might be a tight fit with the horns, but it'll fit to, you know, personal cars. You have two really big delivery vans, one might need to slow down and let the other one pass easily before the other passes. But again, with the sightlines in here, we feel that can easily be accommodated, and eighteen feet isn't unheard of as a sort of a constrained road section. The other benefit to this that we thought is sort of an offhand benefit to narrowing the road in these two places, and you kind of see these bumps both here and here in the graphic, is that those bumps will effectively act as traffic calming, right? Because the roadway sort of narrows in those points, you're not going to be able to just have the straightaway that you might otherwise in just no changes to the roadway at all. So that's one option for Plains Road. The other option, now we're changing over to orange here to illustrate it, goes to the other side of the roadway, because that's where you have space. And in this one, there's no constraints like I was just describing, that same way. Some utility poles would likely have to get moved, and, you know, a mailbox here or there that's already sitting right up close to the road would have to slide to the back of the sidewalk. But that's about it for major movements. What does change those, now you've got, you're introducing pedestrian crossings in the road. And so photo A here shows the intersection of Terunza on the left, Plains curving off to the right, and we keep the intersection on the downhill side of this image to give maximum sight distance to drivers and pedestrians crossing the roadway. But that would cross there, and then we'd end up moving up the roadway to about the same terminus point, but keep in mind that many destinations like the town office would introduce more pedestrian crossing in the street. Looking at average annual daily traffic in the corridor, it's a very, it's effectively a residential street, it's not a very busy road, so we didn't feel this was undue safety concerns to introduce those crossings. But there are some safety concerns, you know, if you're letting a town to walk down the sidewalk unintended to go pick something up from the town office. So, those are the two options that we're seeing there. And again, in B here, you can see how some utility poles would likely have to be accommodated. But we're looking at, this is a much more standard sidewalk project. In both sections, you can see here, you've got a five-foot sidewalk, immediately adjacent to your twenty-two-foot road, and it doesn't change much throughout the overall corridor. So, introduce crossings or have bump outs in the sidewalk. That's sort of the north side or south side of the road question, you know? And I think both of these could be good designs for the community, the question is, how would the community like to see that move forward? And so, I've run you through a couple of these different streets we're looking at, the different alternatives. One of the other aspects of this project, oftentimes we'll do a scoping study, just look at one corridor and come up with, you know, two, maybe three different design concepts to present to the community to get feedback on. In this one, we've got two design concepts for Plains Road, one for Arch and one for Pleasant. And one thing we've been doing behind the background here, don't worry, I'm not going to walk you through all of these matrices and these blurry numbers that are hard to see from back on the screen, but we've been working behind the scenes to really put these designs kind of through an analytical process and understand where's the community support, where's the user potential, how useful are these projects going to be, and what's the constructibility of them, and what's the real impact of actually trying to build these things from a fiscal standpoint and from a feasibility standpoint. And so what these represent is numbers that we assign to every single one of the street's projects about community support, you know, from three, being broadly supported, to zero, you can see Pine Woods and Terunza here have zero, that say, people don't want it, right? And then user potential, we looked at how many adjacent homes there are, are there nearby destinations, what's the connectivity to other pieces of pedestrian infrastructure? And, you know, the more connectivity is, the higher it ranks. The more nearby destinations there are, the higher it ranks. The more adjacent homes it would serve, the higher it ranks. And then we looked at, in constructibility, we looked at environmental and cultural impacts, slope constraints, you know, are you going to have to build expensive retaining walls as part of this? Do you have to remove utilities? Does this impact adjacent properties, whether in their right-of-way and need an easement like Pleasant, or just adjacent to their property line? And, you know, anybody that's getting a construction project adjacent to their property line is going to be concerned, and we should be, you know, well aware of that. And overall estimated costs, right? And so we look at all of these pieces to put in to an overall sort of summary matrix of what's community support for each, what's user potential, and what's constructibility. And we go through that whole process to really try to provide the town a sense of priorities on it. And I'll note here that the one thing that's missing from this is your input, your neighbor's input, after reviewing plans like this, after hearing a description of it, of is this the right priority? Are we in the right place here? Because where does this come out is, we multiplied these three matrices across the board and gave a kind of a final score as a product. And we multiplied them because we really wanted to make sure that this community input is primary. And so where Pine Woods and Terunza, if there's a zero for community support, it zeros out the project, right? You know, for no build, we're also considering, hey, what if we just didn't do anything? It's not going to be good. You know, there's support, there was support in the first survey for, don't spend our money here, spend it elsewhere. But for user potential, there's no benefit there, it's not going to make anything safer for anybody, so we zeroed that out. And then with the three that are left, Arch Street, Pleasant Street, Plains Road, you're looking at fifteen point six on Pleasant Street as just a, you know, if the landowner's permission can be granted, this is a straight-ahead win-win project to make a safer route to school, connect to existing and planned sidewalks, followed by Plains Road, and then followed by Arch Street, which certainly between Plains and Arch, Arch will be a more complicated project. Not that it can't be done, but it will be more complicated. And so, I've hopefully provided some good information about the background of the study, where it's going, you know, where it's come to here with our initial designs, and these overall matrices where we're trying to sort of weight and prioritize these different projects. But the next thing we really hope that, you know, you in the room, and your neighbors, and people can give us feedback on over the next month, is to take a minute and go to the town's website and review these documents and say, yeah, okay, you know, I get it, or why didn't you think of this, or why are you designing it this way? And give us feedback. And so this first, I'll take you to these websites, but the first URL is the town website that has a good summary of this project, as well as a more, basically these slides but reprogrammed, so someone can actually read through them and understand what they're looking at. And then a simple survey. So, we put this together, and we really just want people's feedback about, should this be a high priority, should it be a low priority? And that's the final and important piece of our matrices, and wrapping up this report to say, we looked at two different design concepts on Plains Road, and this one's the most popular, this one isn't. And with these feedback, you know, and maybe one of these roads isn't the right thing for the community, maybe one of them is the absolute top priority, but whatever the response, we want to take the community's feedback, wrap that into a final set of recommendations, and then deliver something that the town can really use to take forward, understand some next steps, and budget prioritize accordingly. So, that's it. That's what I've got for a presentation. I am here to answer any and all questions that I can.
Question I've got is, if a sidewalk is put through in front of somebody's house where there isn't any nail, does that have any impact on the taxes they pay?
Not to the best of my knowledge, no.
Doesn't make any difference.
Because taxes are driven by assessment, right, by the town assessors going through and identifying the value of the properties. And to the best of my knowledge, I've not heard sidewalks having an effect on that. I mean, there may be some studies that I'm not aware of, but in general, if there's an impact, it's favorable.
Another question would be, our road foreman is here right now, luckily, how do you look at it? Is that any problem, add to your problems for snow removal and stuff, or are you, you don't give a damn?
I have my opinions on it, which I'll keep also to myself.
Your opinion is important, I'll keep it to yourself.
No, it'll, yeah, I mean, obviously, impact a little bit, snow removal-wise, especially the bump outs.
That's my...
Kind of picture a wing being left behind here and there, maybe on that one design, but not that we wouldn't get used to it and handle it, but it, yeah, I mean, like, kind of like when we did Upper Arch Street, added that from Kamuta's Down to the school there with the new curb. I mean, it's added a little more challenge, but it's not anything we can't get used to and...
I heard one comment you made about, in regards to the bump outs, that Plains Road is not a heavily traveled road, it's one of our most heavily traveled roads, I think, in town, in my opinion. There's a lot of traffic on this.
They're at great speed, too.
And, yeah, and they're usually traveling, the speed is thirty-five, but most of them are doing forty, forty-five, so...
Well, and then you've got...
I certainly would not want to see a bump out on that road.
Well, and then you've got Salvage Yard with big trucks, not that there's a lot, but they're coming in and out.
I'm not sure that's got to go anywhere beyond this building anyways. What's the point going beyond this building?
What I'm saying, the bump out down here, with those trucks.
Oh, yeah, this one, yeah.
Yeah.
Certainly don't want a bump out.
The thought on taking it a little bit further was to connect up with the town forest and then the trails network down to the rec area. Just, that's what was the rationale.
Go right out here and hit the trails right out through the kindergarten, that joins the trails, save a lot of money.
We have done a traffic study, which I think I had provided early in the process, and one might argue that any traffic calming measures would be a plus to slow down traffic.
I can see a lot of front of motors.
Definitely a learning curve would be involved.
Yeah. Well, yeah. But that's the bump out, I mean, you have two options.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
We already got one bump out that's not too good, and that's right down the end of the road.
Oh, no, that one sucks. Sorry. No, it is a little...
That's just some browsing, Dayton, internally about the Dollar General intersection, which is kind of a bump out that we wish was a little bit less bumpy.
Yeah, that's a terrible design down there, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I only saw that when it was in construction, I haven't seen the final result, but, you know, any feedback like this, what you like on sidewalk design, what you don't, that's all good things to go with.
That we don't like, most, I bet there's people in this room don't like it.
Yeah.
Well, there's another one, two.
Race three.
What's the proposed sidewalk? Which side of the road are you thinking more on, going down Plains Road past Toronto to Route 7?
It's, oh, so, okay, so I should mention that, so past Toronto Route 7. So, when it's past, when it goes past west or south of Toronto, in all alignments we're proposing on the south side. We didn't propose one on the north side of that area, primarily because, one, we wanted to connect to the existing sidewalk that's been built by the Dollar General, and two, there's, again, we're driven a lot by these property lines and some buildings that are very, very close to the roadway. And also, we avoided a lot of slopes that are on the north side there that you'd have to build expensive retaining walls into. A lot of times we're looking at those slopes and saying, if there's an option on the other side, that's going to save that alternative a lot. And so in that particular area, connection to existing sidewalk property, where properties are sited, the actual buildings and the slopes, put it all on the sort of the south side there. And then we're looking at either north or south when you get east of Terunza. Does that make any sense? Would it help to share my screen again and talk about it?
No, no, it makes sense. Not boring, but I understand what you're saying.
You will be installing a curb in all the way along the Plains Road, for example. You have your travel portion for the cars, and then there'll be a curb in, and the sidewalk will be right from that over five feet or whatever that way it'll be.
That's correct, and most of these designs, we're letting it right to the edge of the roadway.
But just to be sure, for everybody's benefit, no one is proposing going to construction in this, as part of this study. This is just an exploration of what could be feasible. Part of what Dayton will give us at the end of the project is what is called a deliverable. That'll be more refined design, maybe what the community thinks is their preferred stretch of sidewalk, and what that might cost to build if the town ever wanted to go that next step and try to find the money to build it. So we're not making any commitments at this stage.
And that's exactly it, and I think if people look at these concepts, and we've tried to provide graphic illustrations that show where curves are and, you know, where the sidewalks would sit, if it's something where there's, you know, debate about that, oh, this should be pushed back from the roadway as far as possible, we'll absolutely look into that. We've basically put it where we have driven out of the first review of existing conditions and sensitivity to slopes and property lines. But there's room for wiggle room, and I think this next round of comment, if people look at these reports and say, I want these things to change, if I could have them changed, that's a great thing for us to hear, because if we get, if we get that, if we get feedback, there's still room to adjust.
When do you expect this survey could be activated? I can get it on our website page, the main page, and on the sidewalk study page, and for how long would you anticipate that we should keep that survey open to the public? Thirty days?
So I would, I would propose, the survey is open live right now, and I would tell you that, you know, this, get it on the page right under project documents for project milestones, and then I would recommend running it for one month typically, if that's enough time for you to get word out in the community and, you know, push to local listeners and send around emails and text threads for anyone interested. We usually like to run a one-month feedback review and then we'll look at what the results say.
Has anybody knocked on the door of every house that would be behind this site, new sidewalk proposal, and asked the landlord what they thought about it, or is it possible that some people don't even realize what's, might be coming?
We did do a mailing to everybody along the five different stretches of road, encouraging them to participate in the survey, and that's why you got some of the negative stuff, especially on Toronto, in Pine Woods.
Sorry.
That's all right, I mean, we want to hear it, good, bad, and ugly. So that, we have done that, Joe, not physically knocking, but we mailed everybody love.
I hate to, I hate to be in favor of something that landowners are against. I don't have a dog in the race because I'm a...
Well, that's what we're doing, yeah, that's why we're making sure.
If landowners are, the majority of them are in favor of it, that's one thing, but if there's a hell of a lot of opposition to it, I'd hate to push something onto somebody that they don't want. Are you folks landowners or...
Well, I guess I have a hard time with, I'm right on 163 Plains Road, right before Toronto.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, there's probably five families that walk the block, and my wife's one of them, you know, Toronto people are the other ones. My biggest thing is we're going to be bringing other people that don't live on Plains Road, Toronto, Pine Woods, to walk around their neighborhood. Might call it selfish, but we don't need anybody in neighborhoods that really don't belong there.
Agreed.
I think this is a waste of money, in my opinion. Maybe not everybody believes that by the studies. I haven't found one person that's agreement of it, so I'm curious where that study came from, let alone I haven't heard from anybody stopped by my house that will be owning the property across the road here in the future. But I haven't heard one thing from anybody asking my opinion or, you know, thoughts or process, but seen a lot of people or a lot of pictures with them on my lawn, so...
I would like to see every landlord that has a dog in this race, right in this room to talk about it, but that's not going to happen.
Well... I know, we got time.
We say we're building it, they'll come. The biggest thing is, you're asking a town-wide of Pittsburgh their opinion, and it's not their opinion, it's the people that live on the road that you guys propose on this sidewalk to be on.
I mean, you people that are involved in it, I think your opinion is very, very important in my mind, and that's why I'm asking these questions. If you were building it up by my house, I'd have some different opinions.
I know, we're just talking about it, you know, it's just going to here and, you know, doing studies and this and that, but I think you're going to get more of a... I think you're going to get more of a, a...
Pushback.
Pushback when this actually goes past what we're just talking about.
It's where you have it.
And also, I'm in with that, you know, and I think if I can work, John, if I can work with you to get another mailer out, you know, I will point out that one of the reasons that, you know, a town is not able to knock on every person's door is that, you know, the cost of just human labor hours to go do that work and knock on every single person's door is usually what prohibits that from happening. But I think, I do, I do think our team did our best effort to get letters out, and I apologize to the gentleman in the room, the letter didn't get to you, or it just, you know, got kind of lost in the, in the process. But we're doing our best to listen to landowners who have a dog in the fight, because that's what drove this first phase to take, take out two, take out two of the roads in the study, and actually a third, rotate a third one out. Because we heard exactly that, and we did exactly that, we said, yes, we're pulling the town, but we don't want to know about the town's opinion of Torunzo, we want Torunzo residents' opinion of Torunzo. And when it was exceedingly negative, we, we pulled that. And so Plains was more mixed when we got, got that feedback, so that's why it's still in. But this is a good time to share, you know, share word that these are the ideas being talked about, and they're just ideas right now, and give us more feedback, you know? Maybe Plains needs to have a closer look at it, maybe there's something else. What we're doing, this is absolutely our effort to, you know, do our best, cost-effective way to reach out to the community.
I'm sure it doesn't affect your statistics there that you showed, but the amount of people that are on Plains Road, say you've got 10 houses from Route 7 to Torunzo Road, well, you've got 40 houses just on a small stretch of Torunzo. So it's a little different in numbers.
Sure.
You know?
Yep, we're doing the best we can with the data we get.
I think, I'll add, you know, just to kind of echo Dayton's comment on just, you know, spreading the word and sharing it with your neighbors to, you know, really fill out the survey and get, you know, provide that feedback at this stage so, you know, so we can get all of this information now and, and kind of direct those efforts, you know, with this report that can then be, you know, more productively used in the future.
Well, yeah, and from, from what I understand, if in this next survey, you know, all you guys who live along here put in that you don't want it, and it comes in a zero...
It's going to get eliminated.
That gets eliminated, correct?
We will respond to that, absolutely. Like, if it's overwhelmingly negative feedback about a project, every scoping study specifically holds a spot for saying, the best, the best choice for this town is not to do this project. And that's, because that should be an option for all of them. You know, that's why we do the scoping study process, rather than just handing out lots of money to go build, right? Because that, that wouldn't, it's, it's a, it's a process to get community feedback, not a, not a straight line.
Biggest thing I've heard in town is, why are we doing sidewalks when we can't maintain the sidewalks we presently have down on Route 7? Which, we know that's a Donnybrook.
I know.
So it's, I can see where a lot of people get upset about that. You can't even walk down Main Street, not safely, on those sidewalks, they're terrible.
Right. Well, part of the reason we, we don't maintain those sidewalks is for the last 300 years, we've been, we redo Route 7, and it never gets done, so.
So standby nine, let's see, 2028, maybe? That's the earliest, but let's bring it into the 30s.
So, yeah. It's guaranteed if we went through and fixed those all up, the next year they'd come in a tear.
Well, that's one way to get it done, then.
Well, it might, it might.
Just my thoughts on it, that's all.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions while still Dayton on?
Just the biggest concern is safety on that.
On that stretch of road, especially Halloween time with kids, townwide yard sales, where's everybody going to park? Are we assuming everybody's going to park at the town office and walk to all these places? There's not a whole lot of people that walk around the block up here. There's maybe 10 people, so I don't see it feasible to waste this kind of money. I think we can use the money in the Village Green or, you know, maybe update the sidewalks on Furnace Road heading to the rec area. But I think we can spend money elsewhere in town besides on the sidewalks here. I agree with the Arch Street, why not extend it for the kids there? But the other two are...
Plund Street also.
Yeah.
But definitely...
Definitely not here on Pine Woods Road, or Pine Woods or Plains at that intersection, especially with the truck traffic, make a huge light swing there.
Good feedback.
Thank you very much, Dayton. We appreciate a very thorough presentation.
Yes, thank you.
Well, thank you for, thank you for your time, and we'll, we'll stay in touch about, you know, making sure that survey gets out. John, be in touch if I can help you with any promotions. You have Eric, you too. And we'll, we'll check in again and see where we can take it from here after we hear from the community.
All right, great.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes, thank you.
It's my pleasure.
Appreciate you coming in person.
Yes.
Now you have to actually get out.
I know, I've only seen a little screen up until now.
Good job, but the next thing is, is what the people really want.
Yeah.
I think the number that was alarmed was the number of people that don't live in the neighborhood and in the community.
Really valuable.
They still want it.
You know, so, John, we can coordinate on, on that and publicizing.
Yeah, sure.
Our PC can share, you know, any publicity stuff.
Oh, and then, you know, the other thing I meant to bring up too, because so, for people where cost is an issue, because I know we talked about it in some of our meetings, like, because some of the numbers are terrifying. But so, and is, can you speak to what typically the grants are and what the town's match would be?
I'm not 100% sure on that. I think it depends on the grant program. John, you may actually...
Wasn't it like, wasn't it 10%?
Generally, it's a 20% match for these construction, construction grants. The only one where we really do even better is highway structures grants. You can get up to 90% coverage of the transportation.
Okay, maybe that's, okay.
But for these types of projects, it's usually 20%.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted that out there, because, and not that we're even close to anything, but for people who are, money's a concern, just knowing that this isn't like all that was coming out of Pittsburgh taxpayers.
Right. But it's also not all grant money either.
Correct, correct.
800,000, 22,000, that's still 160,000.
Oh, it's still big money.
Yeah, it's still big money.
Exactly.
So is this, this way that he's talking about, when I get this right, he's planning on, well, you guys are planning on putting a sidewalk right over the sewer and water lines that run right down? I believe that's on that side of the road.
First of all, we're not planning to do anything.
No, 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 I know.
If it were to happen, proper terminal.
The line up here is in the middle.
They're aware of it, we've given all those certain, those lines and locations. And that's part of what they're doing, looking for routes that avoid some of those conflicts.
Utility conflicts.
Yeah.
What was that?
Too bad to put sidewalk over the water lines.
Too bad to build the roads over the water lines. That was a, that was not a rocket scientist came up with that idea.
They don't want to jut out down here by that tree, you know? That's crazy.
Take Brandon, every time they pave a road, you know they're going to change the water and sewer the next year.
Yeah.
That went on for years.